Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 25th City Council Meeting. This morning, our invocation will be given by Leslie Johnson, Pastor of Eastland Cumberland Presbyterian Church. And after the invocation, Councilman Shadi will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please stand?
Holy God, we take a moment to pause before this day and the deliberations and all that will happen today, and come to you and ask a blessing. We give you thanks for the leaders of the city, those that serve all over the city, those that make this a beautiful place to live, Lord. Be with the deliberations today. May there be justice and mercy and grace and all the good things that help improve this city. Level heads and reason for the day, we ask. Lord, just be with us as we serve, as we make this an even better place to live for tomorrow than it was yesterday. We just give you thanks and put it all in your hands. Bless us, each and everyone, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call the meeting to order. Item three from the Office of the Mayor. Well, before we do that, we've got a couple of proclamations to share. And we have T.O. Bowman, Kate Bradley, Kristen Culver, Megan Carter, and Ashley Dixon here this morning. And I will ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Whereas Oklahoma City is a member organization of Oklahoma City County Health Department's Wellness Now Coalition that is committed to making changes in order to create a healthy and well community. Whereas Open Streets OKC is organized by a groundbreaking partnership between the Wellness Now Coalition and several member organizations, including the City of Oklahoma City, the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, the Neighborhood Alliance of Central Oklahoma, and the YMCA of Greater Oklahoma City. Whereas Open Streets is a worldwide initiative to repurpose streets into fun, safe places to showcase active transportation, local businesses, and health and wellness. Whereas a thriving corridor of the Northwest 23rd Street Commercial District encircled by historic neighborhoods such as Besta Park, Jefferson Park, Heritage Hills, Heritage Hills East, the Paseo, Crown Heights, Edgemere Park, and Gateway, Gatewood shall serve as host and site to the inaugural Open Streets OKC event. Whereas the Uptown 23rd Association oversees and implements landscaping and beautification, economic development, and marketing efforts for merchants along the Northwest 23rd Street Commercial Corridor. Whereas Open Streets OKC serves the citizens of Oklahoma City by creating a safe, family-friendly corridor and through promotion of active transportation, health and wellness, strong communities, and a vibrant local economy. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim March 30th, 2014, as Open Streets OKC Day in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation to these fine folks. Now, just to get some more insight as to the Open Streets activities, would you mind sharing just a little bit about this Sunday's event?
Absolutely. Open Streets OKC will happen on Northwest 23rd Street from Robinson to Western. It's roughly one mile of street that will be open to citizens to come out and enjoy the street, participate in physical activity, and to raise awareness about active transportation. We have over 40 participating organizations that will be providing activities along the route. And the Uptown 23rd Street Business Association has engaged a lot of their businesses to be open that day. So it's going to be a great time, and it'll be from noon until four on March 30th this Sunday afternoon. So please come out and join us.
Great. So this Sunday, noon to four, along 23rd Street between Western and Robinson. Great. Well, this sounds like a lot of fun, and we appreciate you all coming down. Let's show our appreciation one more time. And now we have another proclamation for the month of April is National Poetry Month. And we have joining us today is Patty Koch and Trina Lee. If you two will please join us, and we'll ask the clerk to read the proclamation.
Whereas the Academy of American Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month in 1996. Whereas National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets, introduce Americans to the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, bring poets and poetry to the public in immediate and innovative ways, and make poetry an important part of our children's education. Whereas National Poetry Month, under the leadership and direction of the Academy of American Poets, is now the largest literary celebration in the world. Whereas poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all Americans. And poetry, as an essential part of the arts and humanities, affects every aspect of life in America today, including education, the economy, and community pride and development. Whereas poetry has produced some of the nation's leading creative artists and has inspired other artists in fields such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as National Poetry Month in Oklahoma City. And he urges all citizens to recognize and celebrate the important role of poetry in creating and sustaining this great nation with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation to these. Now, Patty, do you want to share just a little bit about some of the activities that may be taking place during the month of April?
Our main activity right now, and one of the things that I would like to say about poetry, is everyone in here has been brought up with poetry, whether you even stop and think about it or not. Nursery rhymes when you were little or to your children. You sing hymns in church, that's poetry. And even the music today sometimes is poetry, maybe. And we encourage the Poetry Society of Oklahoma and the American Poetry Society, were both started in 1934. American poetry started the national, April is National Poetry Month in 1996, and as it said in the proclamation, that's worldwide now. Our Poetry Society really encourages people to read and write poetry, but we have every year something called the Youth Lore, Oklahoma Youth Lore. And this is for students all over Oklahoma, whether it's public schools, private schools, homeschooling. And we encourage them to write. I think their teachers make them, but we're not going to go there. And then they send the poems in and they're judged. And on April 26th, at the new Patience Latin Library, we're going to have the Oklahoma Youth Lore at 1:00. It's open to the public, and it's really kind of interesting. Some of these kids are just outstanding in what they do. And then we have three more, what we have meetings and contests. We have three more this year, too. So we encourage anyone, and if anyone's interested, just look up on the, of course, on the Internet, the Poetry Society of Oklahoma, and we have all sorts of information. But we do encourage everyone to make poetry a part of your life because it already is, even if you don't know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give Patty and Trina a round of applause again.
I would like to thank my City Councilman, Matt Catee, for always being so supportive and encouraging on all the things that we do.
Trina, I'm going to have to give you equal time with respect to your council.
Well, I have to appreciate Pat.
All of these individuals are just great representatives, and we again appreciate all of your help with this. Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, moving to the Office of the Mayor, we have a resolution approving travel expenses for the mayor to testify before the U.S. Congressional Committee in Washington, D.C. on March 27th, 2014. Any questions? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 18th, 2014, and item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 11th, 2014. It's approved unanimously. Next is request for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Vice Mayor, several this morning, starting on page 13, under item 8B, Ward 3, PC 10362, the applicant is requesting that this item be deferred until April 29th. Again, that's item 8B until April 29th. Moving to page 14, under 8H1, item H, 2432 Southwest 50th Street, where as that be stricken, the owner has secured. And item I, 2505 Southwest 52nd Street, where as that be stricken, the owner has secured. Then moving on to page 15, under item 8, 1, the assessment district on Southwest 134th Street, that's actually Southeast 134th Street. And so because of the error in the address, we'd like to defer that one week until April 1st to get that cleaned up. So again, item 8I will defer one week until April 1st.
Okay. Thank you. We will now recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Any comments? Passes unanimously. Next, we will adjourn the council and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Okay. Any comments? It passes unanimously. We will now adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items. Okay. Any comments? It passes unanimously. Adjourn OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
Are there any individual considerations?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to mention item 6O.
Any others? Meg, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize Robbie Kinzel in the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs. This item is a specific request for proposals to help us identify professionals in the community that can help us handle, install, remove art. And we've had a program over a number of years where we've, I think Bicentennial Park is a good example, where we've removed some of the artwork and identifying places to, either to put it back or to identify new locations for it. And so we're reaching out to the community to identify some professionals that can help us in that regard. The Office of Arts and Cultures is robust, and it's doing great work, but it's one person and an intern, I think, at the moment. So we need to partner out in the community with some other folks, and this is a good way to do that. So Robbie, thank you. I just wanted to recognize the great work you're doing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ready to vote? Item seven is concurrent docket.
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
All right. Thank you. Any individual considerations? Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Moving on to item number eight, items requiring separate votes. Pat, the first one is in Ward 8.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is a restaurant that's being built along Memorial. It's in an area of several restaurants already. Those other restaurants have ABC license, so this is nothing new. So I would have moved, I asked the secretary, did anybody sign up to speak on this? There are no protesters at the planning commission level. I would move for approval.
Okay. All right.
And I would ask for the emergency on this also.
Okay. So the first time, we'll be voting on the passage of the item, then we'll come back and vote on the emergency.
Thank you.
Any comments? Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Now we'll vote on the emergency clause. Any comments?
Move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move with the emergency.
Okay. Ready to vote? It passes unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make one comment here.
Yes, sir.
I really think that our citizens would be better served if we could somehow convince ABC group and state level to allow us to issue these permits to the city. The planning commission now does most of the screening. They look at the distance, churches, schools, and everything, and make sure there's plenty of parking, access is good. And so I would, I think the city does the screening now. I don't know if there's an actual hearing at the ABC level or not, but it does sometimes choose our citizens. They get this zoning approved, and they think they could go out and get an ABC to do it right now. They can't. They have to go to state and get a permit. So it is a little bit of a, in regards.
Mr. Ryan brought it up with me yesterday, and so I have talked to Jane Abraham, and we will put that on our legislative agenda to be considered for future legislative agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item B.
It's been.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. All right. Next item is item C. These are ordinances for final hearing. C1, Meg is in Ward 6.
Yes, this is a request to restrict parking on the west side of North Hudson from Fourth to Robert S. Kerr between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning. And this is right across from the parking garage for the county courthouse. And I don't know if anybody else has experienced the problem, but when people are parking along there, it makes ingress and egress extremely difficult during a congested time. And I think this came to us previously, or it came to planning previously, and they wanted to restrict that parking all day long. And after some meetings with downtown Oklahoma City, you know, it was determined that the really most critical period was this 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. when people are coming in, when jurors are coming in to the courthouse. So I would move approval.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions? Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Next item is item number C2 from Ward 7.
I thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Next item is item C3. Again, John, from Ward 7.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I move for approval.
Second.
Any comments? Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Next item is C4. John, you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I move for approval.
Any comments? Ready to vote? Passes unanimously. Next item is the ordinance to be introduced and adopted with an emergency amending ordinance number 24846.
Right. And these are, have to do with the bond sale we had last week, and because there were only four council, or five council here last week, we weren't able to do the emergency. So this is the same item with the emergency, bring forth the emergency. The first item D has to do with the general obligation bond issue, and the next item has to do with the gold bond authorization, taxable gold bonds.
Move the emergency. Second.
Okay.
Needs to be done first, move the adoption, and then second motion.
Okay. Meg, would you move?
I change my motion and move the adoption.
Okay. Any comments? Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Now we're ready for the emergency.
And I now remove the emergency.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Ready to vote? And Jim, part E is the emergency.
For the gold bonds.
Yes.
Same, same, same issue.
Okay.
So I make motion to amend the ordinance, 24847. Second.
All right. Any comments? It passes unanimously.
Yeah, I move the emergency.
Any comments? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Item F is a public hearing regarding ordinances related to motor vehicles and traffic, amending Chapter 32 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code, 2010, Article 2, Division 3, Section 3272.
And this has to do with school crossing criteria. This was introduced last week. Eric Winger gave an explanation on it, and today is the public hearing portion of the adoption process.
Okay. We do have one person signed up to speak on this matter, Mr. Joe Kitchens. Mr. Kitchens, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Joe Kitchens, Superintendent at Western High School, 8401 Southwest 44th Street. Members of the council, I appreciate that you're considering this issue. We've long wanted to see if we could get the school signs up at Bridgestone Elementary. I think it'll be a much safer area for the schools, and we appreciate the work that Mr. Winger has done on this and his staff, and appreciate your consideration of it, and heartily encourage you to take this action. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any comments from the council?
Move the adoption.
Okay.
Second.
All right. It passes unanimously. Next item is item G1, public hearing regarding dilapidated structure. Item A is 707 South Lee Avenue. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Yes, sir. And we'll need your name and address.
My name is Bill Davis. I represent the mortgage holders on this property. And I'm requesting, oh, I live 1101 Desiree Place in Moore, Oklahoma. I'm requesting a six-month extension on resolving issues associated with this property because of the family, the number of family members that are involved in this. I'd like to have time in order to prepare funding, to hire a contractor, or receive bids from wrecking companies. Because the ultimate goal we have is to sell this property. And it's been in my family for, since 1945. It's purchased by my grandfather, who relocated here from eastern Oklahoma after his son was killed in World War II. So it has a lot of sentiment in this, in this property. And family has a conclusion is to possibly just level the property and just sell it, sell it as is. But like I said, I'm asking a six, for a six-month extension in order to do this.
Okay. Meg?
Yeah. Mr. Davis, the pictures are.
I'm sorry.
The pictures tell a story, I think.
Yeah.
It's in terrible disrepair. And the way we typically handle this, so you said you have a plan, can you hear me? You have a plan to either repair it or to, to take it down. So do you have, do you have funding in place to do that? Do you have a plan yet?
We have a plan, and that's why I'm asking.
Okay. Well, the way we normally do this is if you will work directly with our staff.
I'm trying.
Okay? Charles will meet with you right outside and have a conversation about this. We will work with you as long as you are moving toward a plan. This is dangerous. It can't stay the way it is.
Right. And it hasn't always been dangerous in that way. So that's why it's a settlement.
Right. And it is now. So, you know, we have a responsibility, not just to you, but we have a responsibility to the rest of the neighborhood to be sure that it's taken care of.
To the speak, the microphone.
Okay.
Disabled veteran, my hearing is bad.
Okay. If you understand me, Charles will help you.
Okay.
But I'm going to leave it on this list.
Okay.
But you'll, so you have to communicate and have to have a plan.
Absolutely.
All right?
I want to cooperate in every way possible.
Okay. We'll cooperate with you in that regard.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
So I'm under approval of this split.
Okay. Any comments from the council? Please cast your votes. And it's approved unanimously. Next is item H, is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here signed up to speak on item H1? All right. Okay. All right. Any comments? Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Item 8I1 and 2 has been deferred. And so moving on to item 8J is a series of revocable right-of-way use permits. The first one is Beck's Automotive, Inc., to hold Western Avenue Block Party. And Ed, that's in Ward 2.
So I'll move for approval unless anyone's here needs to be recognized.
Yes. I think we have Mrs. Hewlett?
Yes, Carrie Hewlett.
If you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Carrie Hewlett. My address is 4670 North Willard Avenue in Oklahoma City, 73105. And we have, are requesting the closing of Northwestern for one block, not the side streets, just the block, for an afternoon block party where we have a car show, we have head shaving, where a lot of money is raised for pediatric cancer research. This is, I think, our 12th or 13th year, and we are very excited. This is, I think, our 12th or 13th year, and we are very excited. If we raise 127,000, our little group here in Oklahoma City will have reached the million-dollar mark for this good cause. So...
That's great.
We have food trucks, we have, most of it's all done by volunteers who set it up, clean it up, and by the end of the day, you can't even tell that it's ever happened.
Great. Sounds like a great time.
It's very good.
Great. Thank you very much.
And this is on April 13?
Correct.
Okay. I move for approval.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is the Gatewood Elementary School request to hold Gatewood Gator 5K on April the 12th. And Meg, this is in Ward Six.
It is. I see we've got some folks to come talk to us about this. This is a project, I don't want to steal your thunder, so please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tina James, and I'm a third-grade teacher at Gatewood Elementary. And this is Leah Anderson, our principal. And we're here about a permit for the Gatewood Gator 5K. And address is 1821 Northwest 21st. And our 5K is to raise money for a playground and track that would serve our students. Right now, we just have an empty field. There is a blacktop and two basketball goals, but other than that, there's nothing out there for our kids to do at recess. And so we're working to raise money for a playground and track, to promote healthy lifestyles, and give them something to do while they're out there instead of just standing around and talking and things like that. Also, there's no public park within the close vicinity of our school. They'd have to cross over major streets and through major intersections to get to another park. So we're working to give them and their families and the community around us a place to come and spend time together as a family and to promote a healthy lifestyle.
So Gatewood was awarded one of the Kaboom Playgrounds.
It was, yes. And that will be taking place on May 3rd. They'll be coming out, and we will, we've been, a lot of the money, we've been doing a lot of paper pencil registrations to raise money and getting donations from other companies and partners to raise money for that. And they'll be coming out on May 3rd and building a playground, the actual, like, playground equipment, in one day for us.
So you were required to raise $8,500 as the community's match for the rest of the playground?
Yes, yes.
And I think you've done it.
We have, yes. But now we're working, anything extra is going to go towards tracks and ventures, you know, to beautify the rest of it and get some things for the adults in the community to get involved as well.
Great. I want to recognize Kristen Vales in the audience, who's the director of the Plaza District. And this is another one of these great things, where the neighborhood and the neighborhood school and the commercial district are all working together to build the community. So I would move approval.
The community has been outstanding. They've just been amazing, helping us raise the funds and making this happen for us. So the Plaza District has been a huge component in that.
Well, I'd like to follow up on one of the points made, that Oklahoma City's public schools have allowed their playgrounds to open up. They will mesh in really well with the park plan. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For this, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Ready to vote? Here we go. It passes unanimously. Thank you. The next one, and we have a speaker here, is the Plaza District Association to hold the Live on Plaza for a series throughout the end of the year. And Meg, this is from Ward Six, and I think we have a speaker here.
It is. Kristen, we already said you were here. Tell us about Live on the Plaza.
Kristen Vales, 2228 Northwest 15th Street. This is our sixth year for Live on the Plaza. I just wanted to share a quick, fun story about the event. About six years ago, when we started the event, we only had about three businesses open, and we were just barely getting our friends and family to come down and attend the event. And I remember seeing a family with a stroller there, and I was like, I have to hurry and go get my camera because someone brought their kids down here. It was just, I had to document that. And so last year, it was really fun at Live on the Plaza. The Sugar Free All-Stars were playing on 16th and Gatewood, and it was a swarm of strollers. So I think it's a real testament to the progress of the district. Live on the Plaza has been a huge part of our growth and progress in showing the community what a great neighborhood we have. So we're excited to start our sixth year.
Great. You know, there are no Fridays left.
I know.
To do things, so you're lucky you grabbed one early.
Yeah, I know.
Pretty soon, we're going to have to start spilling over into Tuesdays and Thursdays and other things. I'd move approval.
Second. All right. Ready to vote? And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 8K, Resolution Authorizing the Counselor to Confess Judgment. And I believe we do not need executive session.
This is one we had an executive session on a week or two ago, and the settlement is for less than the authorized amount.
Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Next item, item L, I do think we need an executive session, so I'll accept a motion to move this to executive session. Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. And the next item, item M, I believe we also need executive session for that, so I'll accept a motion to move to executive session. It passes unanimously. Next item is item N, Claims Recommended for Denial. And we have one person here signed up, Dawn Schramm. Dawn, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dawn Schramm. I'm the homeowner at 2124 Northwest 20th Street. Imagine coming home to find you've been robbed. You feel violated and unsafe. Lawn furniture, firewood for the coming winter, gone. Even the water dish and kiddie pool for my dogs, gone. Items from under my very roof were taken with the blessing of the city of Oklahoma City. Then there's the void court order taped to my front door acknowledging the city, who has been and continues to be prohibited from trespassing on my property, was behind the looting. No search warrant was ever issued. No copy of any application for a court order was ever sent to me. No notice of hearing was ever provided to me. The city snuck around and obtained an invalid court order. I now take medication for severe anxiety. I'm fearful of leaving my house, and I'm afraid to sleep at night for fear of further violations. You have a rogue inspector who I tried very hard to work with, who's operating under threats, intimidation, and bullying. She was relocated to my area from the south side for this kind of bad behavior. She's been labeled by her supervisor as highly aggressive. There's no grievance procedure in place for a citizen to identify these kinds of employees for investigation outside of their own department. You have the mistaken idea that we're the city, we can go where we want and do what we want, and there's nothing you can do about it. The simple fact is, you cannot trespass on posted private property, and you cannot illegally search and seize a person's property. I expect privacy, and I'm protected by the Constitution as well as state statutes. By your letter, your memo, from your city attorney, you're trying to lay the blame and the liability for the loss of my personal property solely on the contractor. Although the city took bids for the action, the city entered into the contract with the contractor. The contractor was acting under the supervision of an onsite city employee. The city obtained the void court order from the city court. The city bears responsibility and liability. I would also point out, this contractor was never vetted by the city. You hired a contractor who is and was at the time of the offense, not even in compliance with state law. I worry that since the city isn't vetting these people, what other unsavory characters you may be providing access to people's homes. Nowhere in the ordinance is wood referred to in the context of junk, trash, or debris. In fact, state statute expressly prohibits the removal of cut wood from private property. You cannot have ordinances that are inconsistent with state statute or the state and U.S. constitutions, and you can't arrange the ordinances to suit what you're trying to accomplish. You have a responsibility to protect each citizen from harm, to protect their rights and property, and the responsibility to make certain the city's employees and those acting on behalf of the city don't engage in criminal misconduct. I've provided the city with a list of items taken from memory. No pictures were ever provided, and the city never took an inventory nor did the contractor of the items that were removed. I have documents. I had to go in and I had to research every item and print out the cost of replacing every single item, and that takes time. If it pleases council, I would strongly suggest the city propose settlement with me rather than go through a lengthy court battle. I, it, it's, I'm sorry, this is a very emotional issue for me.
Yes, ma'am.
When the contractor and the city left my house that day, they left my gates wide open. My dogs could have escaped. People could have ransacked my property. And I'm not there to know what's going on and to protect my property. It's why I keep them chained and locked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tina's here.
Tina Hughes, would you provide us with some additional information, please?
Yes, sir. As the memo says, the city was in compliance with all of the notice requirements and all of the steps that should be taken in the statutory law to abate a nuisance. I also note that we don't go looking for these things, they're always called into us by someone else. I have some photos of the property, if anybody's interested in that, but I don't have them on the thumb drive today, didn't anticipate that I would need them. The claimant has taken this same matter to district court across the street prior to this, and was heard in all of, pretty much what was said here, I understand, was presented to the judge at that time. And her, her, her claims against the city were dismissed. The city was instructed to make sure that any future abatements, she was notified. But in this case, we didn't do anything wrong. The order that she keeps saying that we're in violation of was issued years ago for conditions that had been alleviated by the claimant. And so then that starts, we can't, we were ordered not to, I really wasn't involved in that case, but that order had to do with a previous condition. That condition was no longer there. A period of time passed, and then we have an additional junk and debris violation. So Charles Locke is here, he has some knowledge about that. Rita Tally went over on the case in district court, Charles was there as well. And if, if the gates were left open, or firewood was taken and shouldn't have been, the city did not perform the abatement of that nuisance. We hired an independent contractor, and we cannot be held liable for the negligent acts of independent contractors.
All right. Thank you. Charles, did you have some additional information to provide?
If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Well, I think if I could comment briefly, I've had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Schramm on the phone on at least one occasion, and I do know that this is an extremely emotional subject for her. I did meet with Rita, following Rita Tally, following my conversation with Ms. Schramm. And there is a very, very, very thick file and a long history with the city with regard to code violation issues and lots of allegations that are kind of complicated to unwind. I think it's important, you know, from our perspective, that we did go to district court, that you brought us to district court, and the judge did rule in favor of the city. And I think in the case of hiring an independent contractor, my recollection is that whenever this is brought before this body, we don't have any leeway. Kenny, is that correct, that the city, the city is not liable for the actions of an independent contractor, and we can't do anything about that?
Right. Yes, we're not liable for negligent acts of an independent contractor, only for negligent acts of a city employee.
I am a little bit concerned about the contractor. I don't know any of that information. I'd like to probably know a little bit more about who we hired and, you know...
Their, their contracts come before city council for approval. In this case, I don't believe the contractor did anything wrong.
I think there's a couple of outstanding issues we probably need to take a look at, and the allegations are that the contractor's in violation of state law. I think that's something we need to take a look at, one. And two, if there's an allegation that the inspector was overly aggressive, we need to take a look at that, too, and I'd be pleased to look into those two.
I'd like to make a motion that we defer this item and have an opportunity to meet again with Ms. Schramm and see if we can work out some resolution to her concerns.
Okay.
Dawn, is there a one week or two weeks? What would you, in terms of a timeframe to defer, what would you like to see?
I, I open whatever...
Well, let's go for two. That would be April the 8th. Okay?
Can we have, in terms of timeline, the, it would be normal for us to put out independent contractor bids five days after the first inspection and posting. Is that normal? We, so we did it, we did a first inspection and posting on October 11th, and then five days later, did a second inspection, and then that day issued independent contractor bids. Is that normal?
I don't have the file in front of me. Usually, it's, it's a longer time period, and I believe it was in this case, too. The original notice is, it's at least two weeks before the second inspection, and then the second inspection's performed. And then usually within about four or five days, the contract is issued to the, to the district contractor.
The notice of violation was posted two weeks before the contractor was contacted.
There are, there are things in the timeline, on the third page of the memo, it shows 10-11 and then 10-2. That should have been reversed. There was a copy of notice violation posted two weeks before the contractor was engaged and posted on the property.
Okay. So there's, I would like to make a motion that we defer this for two weeks.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any additional comments? Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Now we'll vote on items A and B of N1, Claims Recommended for Denial. Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? Okay. Any comments? It passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 9A1, Claims Recommended for Approval. And no one's here. Okay. Any comments? Ready to vote? It passes unanimously. Now we have items from council, and item A is an ordinance to introduce and set for final hearing the cancellation of certain meetings in the upcoming year. And Councilman White or Councilman Ryan, did you want to speak on this?
I would refer to my colleague, Councilman White.
It's basically on the day for introduction, not just move the introduction. It'll be set for hearing on the first.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Ready to vote? John, I think we're going to go to your item number XB, Resolution Appointing a Review Committee, if you'd like to give us some background on that.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. On the agenda today is the first step to consider creating a new Tiff District in northeast Oklahoma City along the corridors of northeast 23rd and Martin of the King. This is an area, excuse me, this area is one of the most economic, economic-challenged parts of Oklahoma City, and new development will require assistance from the city. With that comes a developer who is going to build a more than $20 million new mixed-use development that will be anchored by a buy-for-less grocery store chain, and it also will include retail office... retail, office, residential, residential, which will be brownstones designed for a single, for families, excuse me, education and health entities. In order to have every available tool for development of this area, I would also request that the city staff and urban renewal prepare a BLIT study for the area to see if it is possible to create a new urban renewal area north of northeast 23rd Street. I am confident that through conversations, collaboration with the northeast community, we can develop a plan to create an even more area that will create true investment in northeast Oklahoma City. Many people have had many conversations over months and years about this type of development. This is the beginning of a process, and more conversation will take place to develop a true partnership in northeast Oklahoma City. I move for approval.
Thank you, John.
Just want to point out, we don't do TIFs every day. We've only done eight in the history of Oklahoma City, I mean, we've only had authorization to do them in the last 15 years, but we've only done eight. We haven't done one now for four or five years on it, and it's a but-for principle, and it's but-for the TIF development and that money being available, the development wouldn't take place without that. And I can't think of a better example of this than what John is proposing for, Councilman Pettis is proposing for, for northeast Oklahoma City. I, I just think this is, this is probably the type of projects they had in mind when they, amongst other things, when they did the TIF legislation. I think this is a really good idea, and I know that Councilman Pettis has done a lot of work in the area. Kathy might want to fill in a couple more details on the project.
I just want to point out that this is the beginning of the process to create a new TIF district for this area. Part of the process is, a TIF review committee is appointed by the mayor that has representatives from each of the taxing jurisdictions that are involved, so the school districts, the VOTAC, the county, the health department, the library system are all represented on the TIF review committee. There's a representative from the city council and one from the planning commission as well. The process, if, if this resolution today is adopted and the, and the TIF review committee appointed, we will then begin to prepare a project plan, which is the document that describes what the goals of the TIF district will be, how much increment we believe we can generate, and how that increment will be used to stimulate development in the area. I know that it's all very preliminary, but I, from conversations with Councilman Pettis, our goal is to really focus on the commercial corridors in northeast Oklahoma City and to spur commercial development and possibly some higher-quality residential development in the area, multifamily, mixed-use kinds of development that help provide the product that people need to live and work and shop in northeast Oklahoma City. I think the, the process will take several months. Councilman Pettis has requested the Urban Renewal Authority conduct a BLIT study, that's the first step in the urban renewal process, and if the BLIT study, the BLIT study is presented to the city council, and then they have to approve and declare whether or not the area is blighted before we can begin the real urban renewal process. When Councilman Pettis and I have talked about urban renewal, my focus that we, we really believe that having the community engaged in the process of developing an urban renewal plan and the, and the TIF plan as well is going to be really important. Our focus is not going to be on residential neighborhoods unless we decide to use some of the increment to build better infrastructure in some of those neighborhoods. Some of them need sidewalks and better streets and street lighting and maybe park amenities, all of those kinds of things that, that we could fund through tax increment financing. So, I just want to, you know, just really reiterate that I know the councilman has said this, and I'm committed to it, that we really try to involve the community in creating an urban renewal plan and a TIF plan that, that reflects their wishes and their desires for their community. Any other questions about process or?
Larry?
Yeah. John, when you took us on a tour, you took us to northeast 36th and Kelly also.
Yes.
Would that be included in this area? You didn't mention that in your, in your introductory remarks.
That northeast 36th and Kelly will be one of the areas that we will focus on.
Thank you.
It's basically the, the commercial strips along 36th, 23rd, 23rd past.
I-30, I-35.
Right, away.
Going, going east.
Right, and then some up and down Martin Luther King and some up and down Kelly.
Right. We have, we have several catalyst projects, not just the development at 23rd and MLK that have been brought before us recently. There are also some catalytic projects south along Martin Luther King, south 16th, all the way down where it would.
South of 23rd.
South of 23rd, well, south of 16th Street as well. And we'd like to be able to have TIF as a tool that helped, that can make those projects better. The, you know, the, the commercial corridors, the key commercial corridors are the 23rd Street, MLK, and then Kelly up to 36th Street. So that's, I think, the focus that we've talked about.
I think on the, the people that are gonna be on the committee, I think it would be a good idea to have somebody on there that is within the business community of the surrounding areas that's not within the TIF district, because that's, if, if it's, if something like this is gonna affect anybody negatively, it's gonna be those people, and so it'd really be good to have their input on it, on what is, you know, say like a grocery store that's two miles away.
Say it well, it's pretty clear on who should be on the, on the TIF review committee.
And one of the things I forgot to mention is that there are three at-large members that are appointed by the committee from a list of five names that are, seven names that are given to the committee by the, the mayor, and the, by the chairman, yeah, which may be the mayor. So, those seven names, usually we try to reflect the business community. At TIF, in TIF 2, for example, it's Dick Stubbs, Chris Kaufman, and Bill Warren. You know, Mr. Warren has a business downtown, but, but Dick Stubbs and, and Chris are not downtown business people and represent the view of the, the business community.
Okay.
There are also representatives from the affected taxing.
Right.
County, city, library.
Yeah. Well, and I, I wouldn't see why the taxing jurisdictions would be opposed to it, but I could see how a, a business owner in the surrounding area would be, so.
Ed?
Couple of questions, I mean, there's so much to like about 23rd being the busiest transit line and then the need for a grocery store in that area. What, what did we learn from the grocery store study that we did a couple of years ago that tells us how far we are in this but-for calculation? How far away did that study say we were in, in being able to develop a grocery store?
I can't remember the numbers exactly, but basically there were not sufficient returns from the store to support any kind of debt for the building, in just general terms, and I don't remember the, the exact dollar amount, and of course that varies depending on how big the store is. And, and we will, just like we do with the downtown TIF district, we'll analyze each, each proposal that comes to us and make sure that they absolutely need assistance in order to, to make the deal happen. I mean, it, it isn't just a blanket, everybody's gonna get assistance, it's going to be measured and evaluated based on each proposal.
Does it, does it hinge on this anchor tenant, this, this $20 million grocery store mixed-use development?
Does what hinge?
Does the creation of a TIF in this project?
We've seen some preliminary performers that show they need assistance.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't finalized.
We don't know a number.
Looked at the refinement of those or, you know, have an exact amount.
I, I think it's more of the fact that there hasn't been any development, significant development up there for decades.
Yeah.
This will be a tool that will encourage additional development to occur, whether it's this development or other development occurring.
So, so I guess the question that, that evokes, I mean, then is, what is the threshold for TIF development? And isn't, you know, we talked earlier before about legislative agenda, and doesn't this bring us back to the fact that we're the only state out of 50 where cities don't have property tax access to be able to encourage development in certain areas through abatement or et cetera? I mean, isn't, doesn't that need to be addressed aggressively with the state legislature? That the fact that we're an outlier, we're the only state, the city isn't able to, to utilize property tax because we have no access to it, so we can't encourage development in certain areas along transit lines, for example? And so maybe we, this is the only tool that we have left. And you say that we're not doing it every year, but this is our ninth one in how many years, 20?
Yep, 20.
So, nine, nine times, we're, we're saying, we don't have access to property tax, the only way that we can get access to property tax is by creating a TIF district, which then diverts money away from schools, city, county, health department, libraries. It's, it seems like part, part of the bigger discussion should be with the state legislature, putting this on our legislative agenda and, and pointing out that we're just having to keep going to this, to this TIF tool. And so the question, I guess, is what is the threshold for TIF development? Because I'm, I'm imagining there are other parts of the city that might have BLIT, that might have the need for commercial development. What, what, as a policymaking body, what is the threshold that we're saying needs to be hit before we utilize TIF as a tool?
Well, in the state statutes that relate to TIF, there are certain conditions that have to be met in order to create a TIF district. The, the declaration of BLIT by the city council is an automatic, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those things. The location of the district in a state enterprise zone is another one, and there's others that, that are a little bit harder to meet, in my opinion. But, you know, I, in this particular instance, I think what we would ask the council to do is to look at both a sales tax and a property tax TIF. So I don't know that the tax policy of the state for municipalities comes to bear as much on TIF and the use of TIF for development as it does on some of the city's operating budget concerns. I, it's just my personal opinion, but I just, I don't really see that restriction of not being able to use property taxes for operations for municipalities of the state being all that closely tied to TIF, but.
Well, it's just, it's just that you don't have access to it. You could have given abatements, I mean, a lot of cities give abatements to try and drive development along a corridor, and we, we're not allowed to do that, so we're, we're increasingly reliant on TIF. And so I guess, I'm still, I'm still not sure, I understand the definition of BLIT, although a lot of that in the eight preceding TIF districts gets confusing. I mean, there are areas that we're directing development in that I'm not sure would meet a BLIT definition today. So, so it gets confusing to me. What is the threshold where we're directing, you know, $78 million north of the river for one TIF and, and none of it south? I mean, how are we, how, how is BLIT being defined and, and guiding where the investment dollars are going?
It's probably a lengthy discussion.
Right, I, I get, I understand that. Of the contracts in the other eight TIF districts, working with urban renewal, how many would you say have gone to minority developers?
I, I don't, I don't have any idea.
Roughly?
I would say it's a very small percentage.
Okay. Would it be any?
We work with some minority developers in the JFK area. It is in a urban renewal area, but it isn't in a TIF district, or part of it's in a TIF district, but some of it isn't. And we do have some minority home builders that we work with in that community.
But in the eight TIF districts?
I, I don't, I just, I don't know, Councilman.
Maybe it's minor, La Rosa?
La Rosa is TIF number six.
May have had to.
I don't know that it was a minority, it wasn't a minority developer, they may have used minority contractors, I just don't know.
Okay. And what, what would be the role, I mean, is, could, could we have used the Economic Development Funds from the 2007 GEO bond for this?
Not according to the council policy.
Could the council policy be changed?
It could be changed, and I'd have to ask legal if it, if it meets the statutory requirements for the use of the GALT bond funds, I, I don't know that answer.
But that's $75 million, of which roughly half have been used, so there's some 30, 40 million dollars left in that.
Yeah, not all of that's been sold, so there.
Right.
There isn't that much available right now.
But that's a potential tool, should council policy be revised?
Right. I mean, the council's policy has been that those funds are to be used for primary job creation, and we've, we've, we've stuck to that policy so far, so it would take a, it would take a change in that policy, and a policy that was adopted before the bonds were voted on. So, I mean, I, I think that there's a little bit of a, a promise that we would spend the money in that way, or, or that certainly could be the argument.
Would, would there be job creation in, in some of this, this $20 million?
If there is primary job creation in this area and in these developments, which I absolutely hope that there is, they would be eligible for that $75 million.
To, to add on for our minority developers, minority contractors, we actually have been in deep conversation with several minority developers locally and also nationally. With this particular development on 23rd and Martin Luther King, for example, the local developer has teamed up with a national minority developer. And so we are bringing a mix of local and national minority developers and contractors to this particular development on 23rd and Martin Luther King, but also we have local minority developers and contractors who are looking at different areas in northeast Oklahoma City. So, if a TIF district is created, I don't think we'll have any problems with getting minority developers and minority contractors to do work within the TIF district. One of the developers, as a matter of fact, that the Biflis Corporation have been working with, he actually was able to create the, I would have to say, the best Martin Luther King in the country, in Milwaukee. I don't know if the council remembers my trip to Milwaukee back in August, but I had the opportunity to see how TIF can have a positive impact upon the minority community. The Bukowskis, they, they went and found those developers who, again, built the best Martin Luther King corridor in the country to help them with their project, and with that, again, they are looking at, they're engaged with local minority developers. So I think this is an overall win-win situation for the northeast community and the city.
When, when you say "we're working with local developers," or we're, who's, who's "we"? Is that?
Well, when I say "we," the Alliance for Economic Development, myself, we've been involved and engaged and, and talking, having discussions with minority developers, minority contractors. Not only minority, but those developers who have been interested in doing something in northeast Oklahoma City. Let's face the fact, it's been 30 to 40 years since a true development has been done along certain corridors. Ward 7 is the only ward in our city that does not have a full-size grocery store. Ward 7 is the only ward in our city that does not have retail development. So we, we have to do things to, to, to try to get that going. And like I said, I've seen across this country what TIF can do in distressed areas such as Ward 7. You take, for example, I talked about Milwaukee, but, but let's talk about Fort Worth, another pure city of ours. In Fort Worth, there was, it's District 8, which is similar to Ward 7. Their statistics, I think, was pretty worse than, than Ward 7. What they did was, they created a separate TIF district, and now they have retail development left and right. They're appointing people left and right. In District 8, they did not have a full-size grocery store, they did not have retail development. And, and I, I've had the, the great opportunity to, to, in this process, to be mentored by black elected officials across this country, to see how they are changing around their ward, and they're using TIF as a tool. And some of the developments, for example, in Milwaukee, some of the developments in Fort Worth has been truly outstanding. And to hear Councilwoman Kelly Gray to talk about how Fort Worth was. And to hear Councilwoman Kelly Gray to talk about how Fort Worth was able to turn around District 8, I want to give that same testimony. So, this is, today is, is a start in that testimony.
What, can I ask one last question? In just reading the article in the paper, you talked about powers that urban renewal has that the city council doesn't have. Can you outline what those are and how they might be utilized in, in a project like this?
Well, I mean, the most significant one is the power of eminent domain for private redevelopment. And the city doesn't have that ability.
Would, would you envision that being part of this, or...
Um, only in cases where it's, there is no other course. I mean, just like in our other urban renewal areas, we use it when we absolutely have no other choices. If an area's been deemed for redevelopment, if a parcel has been deemed to be part of a redevelopment parcel, then we might, we would have the ability to use eminent domain. Not saying that we always would. I mean, it, it is the, the acquisition method of absolutely last resort.
And, and that is the, the black eye that urban renewal has historically? And that's, that I think, is that why you're saying you need to get the community involved and...
And, and we, and we've had several discussions with the community about the whole urban renewal process. And let's face it, urban renewal left a very bad taste in the community's mouth. But the urban renewal today is not the same urban renewal of, of yesterday. But let, let's be frank, there are some commercial properties that are crime-infested that need to go. Um, and, and, um, we're going to do everything possible to work with those commercial property owners, but it may come a time where we may have to, to, to make development happen. I'm sorry, I, the status quo, um, that's been taking place for 20, 30 years, I'm sorry, is, is, we got to do something different.
When you say the urban renewal's not the same as in the past...
In, in the past, in, in the past, yeah, urban renewal, there's some things that the community did not agree with.
But do you mean statute...
For, for as residential properties and stuff like that. We're, we're not touching, uh, we do not plan on touching, and we will not touch those residential properties. But let's, let's, again, face fact, there are some commercial property along certain corridors, I'm sorry, they are eyesore, there is clear slum and blighty. We deserve something better than what we have.
No, no question about that. I'm just asking, when we say urban renewal is different, are we talking statutorily, or is it that the people are different?
The, 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 the people, the, the people are different, but, 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 yeah, the people are, are different. Of course, people, organizations change all the time. What is different is the community involvement with this process. That's different than what years prior to. The community wasn't that involved and that engaged. Community may have wanted to, but somehow because of politics, they weren't involved. But in this process, the community will be engaged, and they have been engaged.
Great. Thank you.
Just, just, I, I've been to remind that, uh, one of the major contractors on the, on the Devon Building was minority-owned, and one of the contractors on at least one of the Dale Buildings was minority-owned.
Great. Larry?
Just to switch gears a little bit, just having come back from, from Boston, where conditions in the inner city were, were paramount importance. Milwaukee was present, Detroit was present, both of those cities, and Battle Creek, Michigan, of all places, was present. All three of those cities had a very common theme. Part of the deterioration came from the fact that there was a loss of income-producing jobs in the area. And that's the purpose of the gold bonds, is to create or to aid in the creation of businesses in an area that will produce an above-average wage, so that we'll have money to spend at the grocery stores that John is going to put in. And this afternoon, I'm not going to be able to be there, but the Economic Development Trust is going to approve two, or here, and possibly approve, two incentive packages for creating primary jobs in Ward 7, which will create wealth that will spill over and fund or, uh, fuel, if you will, of the activity that John is trying to spur in his grocery store and his retail. And those are the Baker Hughes up on, in, in the northern part of Ward 7, and also the GE facility down in the Health Sciences area of Ward 7. So, the gold bonds do have a role in this, and the voters were told very clearly when the gold bonds were approved back in 2007, that they would be used for the creation of primary jobs. And that's the commitment that's been held forward to this time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Larry. Any other comments? Ed, I, I agree with you. I'd love for the state to allow the cities throughout Oklahoma to participate in some of the real estate taxes. If we go down to Texas and see some of their activities, I think they have a simpler process that they can use, uh, in the area of economic development as a result of that. So, I think we would all agree it'd be nice to be able to accomplish that. Now, John, I want to thank you for all of your work with regard to this. These things don't come easily, and it's obvious you spent a lot of time putting this together, as well as the assistance of Ms. O'Connor and, and the Alliance for Economic Development, and our legal staff, and everybody else involved. This is just tremendous, in my opinion, and I'm thankful, and I want to duplicate that effort in other parts of the city, because, as we've mentioned, there are certainly other parts of the city that could use this. Without diminishing all of your hard work and everything, I, I would like to make this one comment. As you brought out in your article this Sunday, efforts like this were attempted back in the 90s with, at that time, former Councilwoman Willa Johnson. Sometimes it's, it's, uh, the point I'd like to bring out is, I think the level of confidence, both from people and businesses within the city currently, as well as businesses outside of the city, has increased dramatically in Oklahoma City's future. And I think we need to give some credit to the effort that's been made the last 20 years focusing on the core Oklahoma City, the MAPS program. It, I think it's enhanced the city's, uh, ability to demonstrate that it, its growth is truly sustainable and will be for a very long period of time. And as a result, all aspects of, I mean, all areas of the city are now going to begin to benefit if they haven't already. And, uh, but granted, it, it took a lot of work on your part, and I, I thank you for that. And I just want to make sure you're willing to share all of your secrets now with the rest of the members.
Absolutely. And also, I want to thank this council for the support that you all have shown, and also to Kathy O'Connor, and the Alliance, and also city staff for this major game changer in our city.
Okay. So, uh, do we need a motion on this?
We have a motion, just need to vote.
Okay. In a second.
Yes.
Okay. Ready to vote? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. We're going to shift the spotlight to my right and...
Could you just...
Oh, I'm sorry. I got so caught up with all of this. You'll have to excuse me as a substitute. James, would you, Ed, Larry?
Let me just, uh, give a very brief report. Last week, I was privileged with, uh, a delegation from Oklahoma City to spend three and a half days up in Boston talking about, uh, what needs to be done in the area of vacant and abandoned buildings. The, the county assessor, Leonard Sullivan, was there. There was a representative from the, uh, real estate market, residential, a representative from the commercial market, a representative from our planning department, and a representative from our legal department in the Oklahoma delegation. One of the, some of the observations that I'd just like to share with you to cast a little vision, uh, the American cities across this country are facing blight and deterioration. And you saw an example of that this morning with that dilapidated property. In order to get consensus, vacant and abandoned means different things to different people, but we kind of hit in our group on using the term dilapidated buildings, because when you see a building, you can tell whether it's dilapidated or not. And you saw that very vividly demonstrated by the pictures we saw this morning of that one property. The, uh, remedying of those situations is a very challenging situation. The cities that were there that had this, this challenge were Milwaukee, Battle Creek, Michigan, Detroit, Springfield, Massachusetts, Wilmington, Delaware, uh, and I, I think that's pretty much the list of them. There are a number of tools which we were apprised of, of how to attack this problem, tools like, uh, what the, what the county assessor can do, uh, what the legal remedies there are available, what state laws have to possibly be changed. A land bank was talked about, understanding the markets in different areas where the blight has occurred, uh, how that affects the solution, uh, some of the tools of whether you, the ultimate goal, of course, is to restore the property to a productive use, but how do you get there? The vision that I came across, and, and everybody kind of laughed at me in our group, is that I would like to see Oklahoma City someday have zero dilapidated buildings in the city. That would be the vision. Now, how you get there is a real challenge and, and a lengthy process. But, uh, being able to go to that meeting, and I thank the council for approving my travel to go, was a very educational and a very profitable venture, and it opened all of our eyes up to the complexity of this. And I think I can say this with, with 100% certainty, if we don't start today to move forward in addressing dilapidated buildings, the situation is not going to get better by itself, it's going to get worse, and we'll find ourselves in situations that you don't want to be in when you listen to the reports from the Milwaukees, the Detroit's, the Battle Creeks, the Springfield, Mass., the Wilmington Delawares. So, we have an opportunity to move forward. We are truly blessed to live in Oklahoma City right now, because the missing link in all of those cities was a lack of resources, income, that the people could earn by living in the city. They had to leave primarily because there were no jobs there. We have jobs, and don't lose sight of that as we move forward. Thank you, Your Honor.
Larry, Larry, did you, did you present the city council resolution, and what was their thoughts about it? Our, our resolution on vacant and abandoned buildings?
What do you mean by present?
I mean, did you discuss it? Did you tell...
We discussed it among, we discussed it among the group.
What did they think of it?
Uh, well, you noticed, you noticed a very sly way I said that we had decided to talk about dilapidated buildings and not vacant and abandoned buildings. There is a legitimate disagreement, I guess, in, in two different camps about that particular definition. And so, the real estate people were ready to get on board and support our ordinance, if you will, uh, as long as they can come up with a definition of vacant and abandoned buildings. And so, dilapidated structures is kind of what we homed in on. So, there's still a lot of work to be done. We did not spend the whole, we brought the whole group together with one accord, and I think anybody who was there would agree, what we want in Oklahoma City is zero dilapidated buildings, uh, in the future, and we're ready to look at all the tools with all the different organizations, from the county assessor, Leonard Sullivan was very, very supportive and very much involved, and what the tax assessor can do, county assessor can do. Legal was very open in what changes would have to be made at state law to get from point A to point B. The real estate market, again, on that one stumbling block, the definition, was committed to, to improving the situation. And the planning department had done a lot of work in coming up with our original ordinance. And so, how it all shakes out, I think it's coming together and keeping our eye on the goal and not getting hung up on the particulars as we move forward.
Thank you. Pete, we are so pleased to see you back with us, and, uh, any comments or thoughts?
Well, I, I thank you for that. I want to tell you how glad I am to be back. The, uh, if you have to go to the hospital and you're not in Oklahoma City, you need to be in Sarasota, Florida, and even take Mike Dover and Ron Milliken with you if you can't take your wife or your husband. Because, um, I don't know, I, that I'd have done all right without both of them, and the hospital in there was great. But I'm feeling better, and I'm glad to be back, and I appreciate all the kind words and everything that I heard from folks around. Appreciate it very much. Very pleased to be back.
Thank you. Meg?
I guess just very quickly, we talked about some of these fun neighborhood walks. Thursday night, Broadway Automobile Alley had its shop op, and the lighting of the amazing Buick sign at the corner of 10th and Broadway. And if everybody hasn't seen it, it is just spectacular, glows all around the city. So, congratulations to the Mid-Tent Renaissance Group for getting that accomplished.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and again, thank you, council, for this huge step to change, uh, the perception of northeast Oklahoma City. I also thank the Alliance for Economic Development for their continued work in trying to improve northeast Oklahoma City. And also, I want to say thank you to the Oklahoman. When I looked at Sunday's newspaper and saw that story, it brought tears to my eyes to seeing a story being told. So, thank you to the Daily Oklahoman. Thank you, Steve Leigmeyer, for doing a great job. Thank you.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
We have Mike Knop here this morning to update us on the ever-changing landscape at the, down on the boathouse district, the Oklahoma River.
I'm going to go through several slides here to kind of give you a, an up-to-date look at all the exciting things happening in the boathouse district. I will just say to begin, it's just great to have water back, you know, after a couple of months of, of looking at, um, a ditch again, essentially bringing back memories of what the river used to be like. And I will say, it is just alive with activity right now, um, and it's a great sight. I would also say that I just returned from Dayton, Ohio, where I spoke as a keynote speaker to a river symposium, River Summit there, involving communities from Cincinnati up their Greater Miami River. And come to find out, they're using the Oklahoma River as the model for their river development and activation. And so, I think it's pretty exciting to see other communities take note of what's happening here in Oklahoma City for so many things that are going on here, uh, but specifically in, in our world, the river. So, um, as I mentioned, there is a lot going on. We continue to march down the road of becoming one of the premier venues, not only in this nation, but in, in the world. And I do like to always remind everyone that it is a completely, uh, and I tell this around when I speak, that it's completely a grassroots effort in that this is how it began when, um, storage container development wasn't cool. We, we had a storage container boathouse on the river, and that was done by a group of community volunteers. And, um, everything that has gone on and the momentum we're enjoying now has to do with the fact that we've had so many people working together. And, um, I also want to draw your attention, just outside here, 10 years ago, OCU began the varsity rowing program, which really, um, began a lot of the momentum with the river development. And we christened the first boat in honor of Ray Ackerman. And so, that was just, 10 years ago, that occurred. And marking that 10-year anniversary, we had an event last week commemorating that, that event. And we had what, our first, what we call the opening day regatta, kind of a, a way to kind of signify that the river's open for the spring, and we have a lot of activity beginning. And we turned the lights on, had some college teams up, and, and they raced, and it was, uh, it was great to see. And, you know, people continue to be amazed by the lights that, that glow now over the Oklahoma River. I'll also say, the site of the new buoy system that was also just completed is also really remarkable. If you've not seen it, and you look over from Interstate 35, I mean, it is very visible. We have a world-class race course in place. It was just completed, uh, last week by a Hungarian installation team. They're the ones that designed the Olympic courses, and, and it looks great. It's another part of Phase 2 of the MAPS 3 River Projects. I mentioned river activation, it's really what we're focused on, is how do we get people engaged in all the, uh, in getting on the water? And one of the ways is through our world-class events, using the lights. You can see all the events that we've had over the last 10 years. And specifically, this, this year, we are gearing up, uh, the first event being the National Team Trials in April, followed by a central youth... Trials in April, followed by a central youth event, which will be kids from across the Midwest coming to Oklahoma City, high school kids. We'll have the Big 12 Championship, and then in May, we'll have the Stars and Stripes River Festival. However, I do want to draw your attention through Harvard up there because I did... As the 10-year anniversary approaches for the regatta as well, Harvard has come every year for the last 10 years, and I think that is kind of a special relationship we formed with the oldest intercollegiate team of any sport in America. But we have this world championship coming in September, and I do want to draw your attention to that. We have over 30 countries planning on making their way to Oklahoma City. This event has never been held in the United States. It was in Copenhagen, Denmark, last year, and the year prior. It was in Rome, Italy. So we... Not Rome, New York. It was... So we definitely have our work cut out because it does create an opportunity where the International Federation will bring dignitaries here who will get to see our city, get to see our river, you know. And really, it's going to set the stage for future large-scale events on our river, in our whitewater center. And frankly, it's not just canoe kayak. In this Olympic sports world, as we have major world championship events, the word spreads about our ability to host those kinds of events. So it's going to be a very significant event that we're getting ready for, and you'll hear more about that here in the coming months. I also want to draw your attention back to the Olympic Training Site. We renewed our training site agreement for the next four years, and officially, we're the only river in America to have the Olympic rings. And a new development, and I do like to show this image real quick. This is our lightweight team, and just to put it in... We have a... The lightweight national team is housed in Oklahoma City. These are athletes that have moved here from all over the nation to pursue their Olympic dream here. Why that's significant? The lightweight team is a very difficult race, a difficult boat in international rowing. And it's hard. It's because everyone's the same weight. And so it's not a matter of how big and strong you are. It gets down to technique and precision, which gets down to the training environment and all the little details. Well, they've seen incredible increases in their performance since moving to Oklahoma City. They think it's one of the big, bright spots for an Olympic medal for Rio, and these athletes have embraced Oklahoma City. They love it here. They talk about it. They Facebook. They, you know, they tweet about it. And one thing they insisted on is, on that picture, you can see an Oklahoma City sticker. This is in Lucerne, Switzerland, at the world championship. While they're representing the United States, they also feel like they represent Oklahoma City, and I think that's pretty cool. And to kind of balance that off, I also want to kind of showcase this young man in canoe kayak. We're also the training center for USA canoe kayak. He is representing the United States. He's actually the fastest man in America, junior athlete in America. Well, he's from Jones, Oklahoma, and he came into the sport because of the development of the river here in Oklahoma City, already making an impact in our kids. This picture was taken a couple days ago in the early morning as the team started getting on the water with our new race course. And I have Team OKC here. This is a new booster organization that will be supporting our Olympic athletes and Olympic hopefuls. And we have athlete housing finally coming, and that is... This is on Ninth Street, if you don't recognize it. This is the old Java Dave's, and it's actually an old gas station from a long time ago, but it has been renovated, and it's going to be the Team USA house. So we'll have a place for these athletes to land when they move to Oklahoma City to kind of get established. And so this has been long needed and something... We like the fact that they're going to be in the middle of this thriving urban area and really become a part of that community. We really do feel like we're changing a lot of lives out there. These boats racing just a few months ago in November, these are our teams from US Grant, Capitol Hill, Douglas. Those youth outreach programs are back in action now. They're now getting on the water. We have 13 school rowing and public school rowing and canoe kayak programs. One of our biggest issues remains is transportation. However, we do have some very dedicated sponsors at some of these schools that help with that. But it's been a very successful program. We got to thank Sand Ridge, too, for their support of that. But they're back on the water, and we look forward to that program growing. This is a good example. I want to show how we do this because there is no cost to these schools to come down. We provide all the boats, all the coaching. Well, we have groups like the National Guard, who there's a cool camouflage boat in the boathouse that the kids love, but we christened a boat in their name, and it's, again, through support with sponsors like that. And then we start at age eight, and we've got all our programs beginning now. And if you go down there at 4:00 in the afternoon now, you're going to see a lot of activity on the river. And I also want to update, we have over $2 million in college scholarships that have been awarded to our youth rowers over the last few years. And so we've got about 20% growth on all of our programs for 2014 with more and more people. I think more people are... We're starting to embrace the fact we're a river city and understand we've got these great resources, and so we're seeing a lot more people get involved. Not just kids, but there's 50 corporate rowing teams, dragon boat teams, Integris Jim Thorpe Adaptive Paddling Saturday mornings. It's a really inspiring sight. People get on the water. This young man at the top right, he's in a wheelchair, but he's in a race with able-bodied athletes, and you can see coming across the finish line first or right in line with first. So everyone's equal on the water, and I think that's pretty cool. And then there's seniors dragon boating. We've got some active groups of seniors that are coming down every week. They come in buses, they go dragon boating, and they race. So it's been really exciting. The youth fitness programs are really expanding, and it's part of our infrastructure and capital projects that are going on, creating more fitness-oriented family activities. I want to mention, we just were awarded a TSET grant, and this is something that we want to reach out into your communities to help find ways to bring kids and get kids active at the river in our programs. And this is something that we're going to be very aggressive on over the next three years, working with many groups, from the Boy Scouts, the Boys and Girls Club, to the Girl Scouts, to the schools. And the funding does provide for access, transportation. So we certainly want to help work with you in any way you would like to be involved, please let me know. But again, it's all about trying to create healthy and get our kids active and fit. River Sport Adventures is our program, our attractions that are now open that are all about getting people active, but in a very fun... We believe that people are going to be inspired to be healthy if they're having fun doing it. And so we have our... I put our little caution sign up. We've got some extremely cool things in process, which the zip line across the river, the air zone, the Chesapeake Central Boathouse, the youth pavilion, which will be coming. This is... We are now open weekends with River Sport Adventures. We were just packed last week with a lot of activity. This is a picture of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Youth Zone. The Sky Trail continues to... This is a view from inside the Sky Trail. We can get over 50 people on it at one time. It's really become a popular thing. And one of the exciting things about the Sky Trail is the ways you can get off the Sky Trail, which is the free fall. And it's worked so far. Now, the rumble drop, they jump off the top, and we slow them down, but it's kind of a reward for getting... Well, for some people, who get up to the top, they have a fun way of getting down, and that's due to a partnership with the Thunder. And then we have the tallest slide in America, and we make it look like a cloud that you jump into, and then you can slide down from the top. We also have a partnership with Subaru. We're excited about this. We have the largest pump track in America now, composite pump track, which is this, and this is from above, and it's another way to get, you know, it's a mountain bike, a small mountain bike area, but you use your momentum to go around it. It's a lot of fun, and kids are loving it. Now, we're looking to the future. There's a lot of projects in place, in play right now. The zip line is under construction. It will go from the top of the Sky Trail across the river to this new tower, which will be installed middle of next month, about April 14th, they come in. It'll be about a two-week installation. You'll come to the south tower, you'll climb up higher, and then you'll zip back across. It'll be a spectacular experience because what you're going to see as you go across the river and all the activity on the river, then coming back and seeing downtown, there's a new platform being designed that you'll land in on the north bank. And this is a view of the tower construction or the foundations. The youth pavilion is something we're still working on. We're raising money. We're getting close with that. That'll be a real hub of activity when that is complete. The CHK Central Boathouse is underway. In fact, the groundbreaking, which everyone is invited to, is on Thursday at 3:00 PM on the site. They've groundbreaking, they've started turning dirt a little bit, but it is great to see that underway. It will bring music and art to the river in addition to their varsity rowing program. MAPS III Phase Two, as I mentioned, is well underway. There will be a lot of great wayfinding signage, race course improvements. As you can see, this is some of the gateway signage that will... In the wayfinding, really improve just the access and just the aesthetics of the area. These actually, some of them light up. They actually start at the end of the Brooktown Canal, so it'll guide you through the tunnel and into the boathouse district. These are the timing towers, which will be installed here real soon on the south bank of the river. One, you know, some cool features with that, of course, we'll have cameras in them. There'll be a spotlight at the top with a fogging system, so we can create a lot of... Just another aesthetic for our events and be able to livestream our events. I'm sure you've seen these images with the whitewater center. We're very enthusiastic about getting this underway. I will say, too, the international community is very enthusiastic about this as well. I've been already requested to consider a world championship bid for, you know, for coming. Now, we're not doing it yet, but we are being... You can see the eagerness out there of people coming. But again, one of the greatest things about this is just the community engagement that will occur in the center. And I did return to Charlotte, North Carolina. They had a St. Patrick's Day festival on their whitewater center. They intentionally turned the river channels green with whitewater rafting in there, and they had a huge music festival. You can see how vibrant it is with just people and rafts and kayaks and stand-up paddleboards, and just people having fun and, again, being fit. So... And this is the London course, just for your... Just to remind you, but our designers did do the London course, and some of the other features, the freestyle features, which if you watch the Olympics and the snowboarding, this is the kayak answer to snowboarding. So we will have that feature in the center, and of course, the model that was done. Then I also want to turn your attention to Route 66 Boathouse because this is another part of our community that's very important to our mission and what we're doing out there. We are developing the facilities at Lake Overholster, continue to make improvements to them. Such a wonderful resource that we have over there with the Wildlife Refuge. We have... We've got two facilities there. We're making... Continue to renovate. We're going to have, in fact, some coffee, a little coffee shop in one of them now, and we're going to have more programming that occurs to really showcase to people the Wildlife Refuge tours that go in there. And one of the things that is exciting is part of our funding from TSET and also another foundation, we will be making some more significant improvements, including some playground feature out there. So we think it's really important to continue to kind of build this outdoor culture that was recognized in Outside Magazine about providing access to our resources. It is, if you've not been out there, I encourage you to go get in a kayak and go up in there. You would not believe you're in Oklahoma City when you get in the Wildlife Refuge there. It's all about working together. We've got a great team working with yourselves and the community, and I think the best is yet to come. This is our new website, boathousedistrict.com. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Go ahead.
I just had a very quick one. How much was the TSET grant?
It's $275,000 a year, and it's for three years.
That's wonderful, Mike. Congratulations.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I just want to publicly thank you and the Boathouse District for what you do for the Boy Scouts. For the council members who don't know, the Boathouse District last year started, along with the last frontier council, started a day camp for inner-city disadvantaged young boys. And last year, in June, we had 200, roughly about 200 young boys from the Boy Scouts and from other entities within northeast Oklahoma City and also part of southeast and southwest Oklahoma City. So, and I'm a part of, of course, the Boy Scouts, along with you, but I just wanted to publicly thank you for opening up the doors of the Boathouse District.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, thank you. We're excited about this year. It's going to be even bigger and better with that camp. So we also will note, we're partnering with the Boys and Girls Club as well because there's the construction in Memorial Park, and so they're going to be doing a lot of their outdoor activities in the boathouse district this summer.
Pete?
The... Mike, let me give you a little bit of historical perspective. I'm not sure most people realize that the river project was a South Oklahoma City project. It was born in South Oklahoma City, the first riverfront redevelopment authority. I chaired that in the middle of '80s, and it was a South Oklahoma City project. It was designed... At that time, we talked about the river being a scar through the center of the city, and we were going to find a way to heal that scar. Frankly, as I look at what you've done, I think probably you've exceeded any expectation that I had in 1985 when we first formed the Riverfront Redevelopment Authority. The things that have gone on down there are far beyond the things that we were able to think about 20-plus years ago. That being said, there's as much foot of shoreline on the south bank of the river as there is on the north side of the river. There are more people, more residents live within a mile of the river, on the south side of the river, by two or three times, that live within a mile of the river on the north side of the river. And yet, I've not seen any effort to develop anything on the south side of the river. And I would very much encourage, and I know it's... That's not... It's much easier for me to say that and you to take it negatively, as I know it is to do it, because the river itself still is that same barrier that it was 25 years ago in terms of north and south. It's always been okay for people from Grant and Capitol Hill to come north of the river. It's never been okay for people from the north side of the river to come south. And I think it's time that some effort be made to look at developing the shoreline on the south part. One of the reasons I'm so much in favor of the Native American Cultural Center, it is on the south side of the river.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so it's going to force some development on the south side of the river. But there's... Wally Post Park is a really wonderful park now. It's been the last, myself excluded, the last couple of council members that have represented that area prior to me have made sure that it was very well... Wally Post is very well done. The Skate Park is on the south side of the river. But there ought to be a way to connect those neighborhoods that are south immediately because those... We're talking about the kind of neighborhoods that John's talking about, about under... Most of them are award seven when you get east of Shields. But those are people that could use that kind of physical activity. We have very high, very low positive health outcomes in those areas. They could use that kind of... So while I want to tell you how much I'm impressed with what's happened, I am a little disappointed that no more effort has been made to move something so that it does become something that we envisioned it years ago. And that is, you know, I was there, the line about we mow the river, my line. That's what... Because I was chair of the Water Trust at that time, and we were literally selling hay rights on the river. So I can't tell you how pleased I am with what's gone on down there, with the one admonition that I would very much like for you to look at trying to find a way to bridge it somehow.
Well, I think that's... You're absolutely right, Councilman. I just want to give you kind of a quick update on what our efforts currently are. Obviously, one of the challenges we have in the boathouse district is the south side of the river is fairly constrained because of the railroad yard. So what we've tried to do is figure out, how do we activate the south bank of the river? The cultural center is going to be a huge part of that, the connection, the trail connections that can get everyone to the cultural... Um, the connection, the trail connections that can get everyone to the Cultural Center will be a big part of that. Um, we are building a, um, facility on the south bank, which is more of a, a maintenance facility, which doesn't, you know, do a lot to activate the community, but that's for our, that's the only thing that we could do with construction in the Boathouse District there. But I will say this, we have a grant request currently with the state, a trails grant, to create a trail network, a mountain bike oriented, um, and trail right along the river's edge in the south bank. And it's something that we think can, um, continue to encourage people to, again, get on their bike, get, get out and be active. Um, the, because we think the connectivity is so important between the north and the south. The thing that I communicate a lot when we speak is the thing that I think we try to see the river now is, rather than being divisive in the past where people stayed away, is that hopefully by putting all the activity on her, on the river, it brings people together. Now we just gotta get them over the river or to, you know, to the boathouses, which we're working on with the programs. But, um, the other thing I want to draw your attention to, we, part of Phase Two with MAPS III is we created a, a ramp into the, uh, Wilepost Park from the river. So there's actually river access from the park, Wilepost Park. So, uh, one of the things that we would like to do in the future is have ability for people to kayak up. Now it'll serve races, race court, you know, the race on those days, so we could have people be in Wilepost Park and then also engage in the races that are on the river. But we think there's other ways to engage people in the waterfront there.
That, that ingress egress point's not there now, right?
It is there now. Just, it's just now being completed with Phase Two, with MAPS III, so. Um, and then the other thing is the Exchange Boathouse at, at Exchange Avenue. Um, we have in our master plan, uh, plans to improve that as actually becoming a community-oriented boathouse for the south bank of the river. The problem, the, the reason that's been delayed somewhat is because it's currently the OU Boathouse until the OU project commences. OU has grown so, so much the last few years that they've completely taken over that whole building. So, once, the plan is for once that, once they move out of that building, it will become a, another community facility for the south bank of the river and then we're gonna make improvements to it with, uh, other features that, right now it's more of like a warehouse, but it'll be improved. And then finally, I'd say, one of the plans that we, we're also very excited about is, uh, as we get to, of course, there's private development in the, um, in the Downtown Air Park and we want to tie into what happens with that to activate the future community there. But at Meridian Landing and, um, on the south bank with the hotel development, we feel like that's a, that's a, and Larry was at, Council McTeve was at a meeting with me at the river stakeholders that we, we did get an update on all the river hotel development. That to me is another huge opportunity for activating our river and that part of the city. There's river cruisers that go up there, but there's very, there's really no activity on the river, yet it's a very natural part of the river with trees. And so we think in the future, having some access point, whether it be a small boathouse, whether it be a, a way for people to get their kayaks under the water from the south bank, that's part of our, our vision right now. I'm not sure where we're at yet, but we think there's a big opportunity there, so.
Ed, have you, have you, just, we were talking about TIFF districts earlier and, and all the southern shoreline is within a TIFF district. Have you talked with the TIFF committee about the possibility of development on the southern shore or you've mentioned the Downtown Air Park area?
Um, we have not spoken about, with respect to the south bank, but that's something we could certainly look into. We did use, some of the, TIFF was used for some of the development of the Riverwalk area on the north bank from the Devon Tower, but nothing on this, nothing with regard to the south bank.
No, the Delta TIFF dollars were used clearly to enhance the pedestrian area over by the, the, the Meridian Landing, over by the hotels on, on Meridian on the south side of the river.
Yes.
How, how far west does the TIFF go?
Which TIFF?
The Downtown TIFF.
Which TIFF?
Two. Two and eight. How far west would they?
Well, eight's restricted to the, 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 the TIFF, um, or the, uh, the Devon TIFF, the Downtown TIFF, two, I don't remember if it goes over to, to Western maybe, I think. I, I, it's, it's in that area somewhere.
Okay. Thanks.
Those are good suggestions. Maybe we can even think in terms of a pedestrian bridge across the river at some point.
I think it's a good idea, yeah.
To connect the two sides. Jim, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Um, you know, there is, well, when you're biking, there's several places across on Western and, and Portland and on Robinson across, over the river. Um, the sales tax report is in your packet. Uh, March was a mixed message. It's about 160,000, uh, below target if you add the use tax and, and the sales tax together. Uh, year-to-date, the use tax is, is slightly over, um, our, our target, the, the, uh, sales tax is down about $4 million. Our economists predicted a slow month in March. They predicted robust months in the, the second quarter of 14 for, for April, uh, May and June. So it'll be interesting to follow that to see, uh, how those come in because that'll really affect our revenue projections for next year.
Budget. Thank you, Jim. Mike, I didn't mean to cut you off. I just thought Jim may have had something else to say about the river, but thank you for coming down. We really appreciate that and those are, uh, everybody's very optimistic about the future there. Thank you. Okay, that's all of your report. Then we have citizens to be heard. We have, uh, Michael Hinton. Yes, sir. Mr. Hinton, if you'll please provide us with your name and address. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor, Council. As always, it's jolly good to be in your midst today and I'm thankful for a day that was not promised to me and I'm thankful to God. But, I'm Michael Hinton of 1729 Northwest Third Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73106. I come today to briefly share with all of you some reflections regarding Oklahoma City. Despite the, the commutes I've had to make to Fort Worth, Texas regarding a very serious injury in, I incurred some time ago and, uh, which has required lots of physical therapy sessions, but I've been able to observe the comeback Oklahoma City is making, especially downtown, the continued economic development in Bricktown, as well as the heart of downtown, the presence of an NBA team and my newest and favorite hangout, the 50th floor of the Devon Tower here in downtown. These are just starters on my laundry list. I could go on and on reflecting a Renaissance this city, renaissance, I should say, this city is making. I heartily salute you folks for the work you've done and doing now to bring new life to this town. I can just imagine, Your Honor and this council, had it not been for the hard work of you folks, this city would have probably become a ghost town on steroids. But you folks have worked hard to bring new life and make this, um, what would have been a resurrection of the dead. I just thank all of you and the almighty God for this moment to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Uh, any other citizens to be heard? We will now move into executive session.